Put in your dues. I don't think you should have to pay the CTE millage.
But that's the thing, like, we all have to pay these taxes, we all have to come in together, and that's why these taxes. Have to be really well thought out, and there are some issues, there are some issues in that CTE. You know, forty percent goes back to the. What is it, ten out of twenty-five million goes back to the, to the actual schools? Not necessarily to pay for CTE. They could use that money.
For more athletics.
They might have spent, they might have blown their budget during covid and not budgeted well, and now some of this. CTE money is gonna just sort of backfill some of the mistakes they made.
And I don't like, I don't like that.
I don't like it when you're saying, okay, we're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna. Help give these kids jobs in fields and jobs they need, so they can have a good future. I love that idea. But if you're gonna backfill budget mistakes, I have a little bit of an issue with that, and. So, I don't know, at the end of the day, I'm probably gonna vote for it. But at the end of the day, every tax sounds like a good idea. And you can't approve every tax or, uh, cause people are gonna get, seniors are already getting taxed out of their homes.
I don't like that one bit.
Anyway, we gotta, gotta. Probably get an end here because my video camera's gonna. Let's just say. Tell us why people should vote for Tremaine, what would, what will you do on city council that will make them worth your vote? Worth their vote, whatever, yeah.
I think. Voting for me is a vote for authenticity. I, the person that I am. At home is gonna be the same person that you see on that dais, that you see in the community, so. For better or for worse, like, I'm, I'm authentic, um. I'm a problem solver. Like, one of the things that my mom has always said about me is that, out of all of her children. I was the one where if you told me no, I said, well, watch.
How many, how many brothers, sisters?
I have, um, so I have two brothers and two sisters, um, and then I have two stepbrothers. But I, I'm the second oldest, and so for me, like, on council, like, I'm gonna solve problems. I'm gonna solve problems, I'm gonna be authentic, um. I'm gonna speak the truth. Regardless of if that truth hurts, um, I'm gonna speak the truth. And people will not have to, to question or worry at all about. Where my loyalties lie, because my loyalties lie with the people of Celine. And finally, like, I, I, I see. I don't see this role as leadership. I think in the same way that other people would say leadership, I see this role on city council as stewardship. Um, I, I am, if elected, I'm being asked to like steward. In a lot of ways, the hopes and dreams and the, the worries and, and. Kind of the future of this city and the people in this city. And so, I really look at this role as, as, as a form of, of. Service, um, like, they call it public service, but like, it, it's really a matter of, of. Of serving, of being willing to be attacked by people who don't know me, you know, it's, it's being willing to, to. To have people decide who I am as a person, um, on a, on a ten or twenty, from a picture. I, I would go through it, I would do this campaign all over again, because I believe that this city is. On an upward trajectory, I think that there's lots of awesome things happening in the city of Celine. Um, and so, yeah, I'm authentic, I'm gonna tell the truth, I'm gonna solve problems. And, and I'm gonna be a servant, I'm gonna be a steward of the city's people, the city's resources, and. Hopefully, you know, people really give me a chance, cause I think that I could do some really awesome things, and we. As a city together, can do some really awesome things.
Awesome, I appreciate it, thank you for taking the time, it was a wide-ranging conversation.
Right, it's always, it's always a great conversation with you, Trent.
I appreciate it, thank you.
We need to, to have the information presented to our constituents, and we need to decide. On those purchases together, and I. I was never given, I, my, like, my, I'll say this, my mom was like. She was tough, and she didn't allow us to make tons of excuses, and part of like how she. Raised us was like, you don't think about just A or B, you should be thinking A through, A through E. Like, you should be able to like, you know, move and adapt and be flexible, and so. I understand that it's a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity, I understand that it is something that we don't wanna lose the opportunity to do. And so, I felt like that we should have been kind of preparing for that. I think we should have been like, we, we, at some point, it would come up for purchase, like, and, and I appreciate the family. You know, coming to the city first and, and. And wanting to have that conversation, but I said it before and I'll say it again, it's a nice to have. Um, it's, it's not essential, like, yes, will it, is it a part of the heritage of Celine? Absolutely. Um, Mill Pond, is that also a part of the heritage of the city? Absolutely. And so, instead of thinking about, do we take them in or take them out, like, how do we protect them? What if we created a, a heritage zone that is specifically, you know. His historic buildings are just. Buildings and structures that are critical to the history and, and the, the heritage of the city of Celine.
But how do you pay for it, you know, like?
And, and that's, that, we haven't even gotten to that part of it, it's like, three million dollars is not a little bit of money.
And the, the, the hard thing about the pond is it's gonna cost you millions either way.
It's gonna cost you millions either way, but, but the, the part about the pond that I don't think people are also taking into consideration is. It's going to affect. Wellers, it's going to affect all of the homeowners, like, in that region, like, so what. Economic value is that, like, are, are we thinking about that economic impact to a small business? Are we thinking about? Oh, for. The, the, how much property taxes are we gonna lose because these properties are now valued lower? You know, like, those are the kinds of things that I think about, I, and, and it goes back to how my mom made me think growing up, I'm thinking of. A through Z, I'm looking at it from like, all kinds of angles, and like, even if it's, e- even if it's stupid, even if it's just like. Well, yeah, that doesn't make a lot of sense, it's still a different way of looking at it, and so, w- w- before. And I have full confidence in council, like, I think before there's any final decision made, there needs to be a vote. But I also wanna like caution people, like, I, I, I fully hear people's concern. I think people in the city like are tired of, of, of paying more and feeling like they're getting less. And I would say, like, we, we gotta let. The process play out before we start to, you know, dump on our council, but like. In a lot of people's minds, we've already signed the, we've already signed the papers, like, we've already bought the place, we've already wrote the check. And it's like, that's not fair to council, it's not fair to, to. Make the, to, to have made the decision for them already, we haven't done hardly any of the research. That, you know, before we can decide, like, this is how we're gonna fund this, this is how we're gonna pay for this, we gotta know what we're dealing with. And people, you know, I, I just get so frustrated that people.
So, so for instance, let's, let's talk about some of the, one of the options I've heard is they're gonna maybe potentially, they could potentially split. That, uh, Davenport property up. Build condos, sell them for condos or something, and use that money to fund. Whatever remains, and I almost think that that's just kind of cheap, but. Would you let, and here's the other thing, would you let anybody else do it, you know? Or only the city do it, like, would you let, how many? Like, how many rules are you gonna? Maybe cut the corners on a little bit to make this happen? For a city project that you wouldn't let happen for a private project?
That's not, no, that's not, I don't think that that's okay, what's good for the goose is good for the gander, like.
It's, it's kind of, it's a.
It's, it's, it's a very, like I said, it's a very tough situation, but at the end of the day. Citizens should decide.
So, there's so many tax, I mean, tax, there's a lot of taxes out there, there's the, this WISD tax that. I think is probably gonna pass, it, cause I don't know if Ann Arbor turns down any tax increases, and. And I think there's a lot of good in this proposal, I think there's some questions I have about this proposal, proposal that don't make a lot of sense, so I'm, I still haven't made up my mind. So, and then, then you're gonna have a Celine area fire department, millage that's gonna come. Renew, renewals or renewals, but although one of the things is, could you increase cares? To fund, help fund the rec center, that, that would be a tough sell, but, um, there's so many. There's so, so many of these things, we've already increased taxes a ton since I, since I've covered Celine, we've. Got the local road millage, which is up for renewal, we've got the Washtenaw Road Millage since then, we've got the, the Washtenaw Health Millage. Um, that's been added since then, a school bond that added to the tax bill. There's been a lot of these sort of things, and there's more coming. Is there money to fund, uh, the rec center, do you think? Because I've heard that it's gonna take a millage, locally, it could be two mills if it was just Celine, but it might only be a half a mill if it was the entire. School district, uh, which would really lessen the, lessen the impact on everybody, on, on, on everybody, but. And I don't know if that's gonna pass or not, so what, what do you see is the future for the rec center?
It's, the future that I see with the rec center is one of partnership, like, we, we can't. Let me take that back, I, I, I still say we can spend on the rec center. Um, but again, I don't think it's gonna build a Celine that people wanna live in. Um, I think, the plan I laid out with RecNext was kind of. Yeah, my, like, RecNext was, you know, what I looked at the rec center and thought, and my. Um, sort of my, my thinking and my tact with RecNext was. Let's, let's take a look at like. What other people have proposed, because a part of RecNext, like, El Cole kind of shared with me some of her ideas. And where she was kind of thinking as we were starting, going into the task force, um. And so, for me, RecNext is, is kind of two parallel tracks. Number one, we gotta fix and clean up what's going on in the rec center. Um, I, I think one of the, the critiques that I had with the task force. Is I don't think there was enough consideration, um. Given to changing governance and changing the leadership structure with the rec center. Um, you know, are, do we have the right people in the right roles? Within the rec center and within our, within our parks and that sort of thing, so. Number one with RecNext was like, okay, let's, let's figure out how we can maximize and optimize what we have. Um, and then, the second part of it is. Let's now go out and build partnerships, right? If you look at and when you think about why a millage or, or, or why sort of a regional partnership. Is almost DOA, um. Is because what are these other partners getting out of the transaction? You know, what, what are they?
Kind of feels like they're bailing us out.
They're bailing, exactly, and so. If you're gonna do the same thing in a different way with the same, or same thing in the same way with the same people. But you think like, oh, well, now we have all this new money, that that's gonna work out. I got a bridge to sell you, you know, and like in Alaska, like.
Yeah, it's, it's a tough one, I think there's a way to sell. This, the, the greater Washtenaw, or no, Washtenaw, Celine, uh, district, like, the Pittsfield, York. Celine Township, Lowdon Township, on some kind of recreation authority, some kind of. Something that, that allows us to, we're not just gonna, maybe, may. Hello, I'm Trent Longmire from the Celine Posture with Tremaine Halsch, candidate for Celine City Council.
Hello.
How you doing, Tremaine?
Good, how are you?
Good, how, what, um.
You got a haircut.
I just noticed. I, I had to, dude. It was insane, you know, you know, people, uh, and not only that, it looks worsening, it looks like there's no hair at all. On camera, though, it's strange looking.
I, yeah. I, I, I've been there.
So, uh, uh, I, I had like kept shaving the sides and let the lawn grow. But there's so little up top, that it started to look insane.
I, you know what, I respect you though, for being one of those who's like, you know what, this looks crazy, I'm just gonna.
I just, dude, I haven't, I just shaved my own head.
Suits you.
Thank you. So, how's the Celine City Council candidate, uh, campaign going at this point?
Um, I have to believe it's going well, um. It's finally, like, we're in the last, what, three days, and I'm not gonna lie, like, this has been, uh. It's been probably one of the scariest, uh. Kind of transformational thing that I've done, yeah, just because I, for me, like. I've always, um. I've always tried to kind of like. Stay low-key, kind of stay in the background, like, um. You know, I, I'd not really put myself out there, like, I'm a very, I, I masquerade as an extrovert, but like, I really am like. A homebody, like, I, I, I got my core people, and like, those are my people, um, but this. Year, I told myself, uh, actually, this time last year, I told myself. That, you know, I wanted to do things that scared me. Um, I wanted to do things that made a difference, and ultimately, I wanted to bloom where I was planted. Um, and I always think that we have to be very careful about the things we pray for, because you end up. Running for city council and, and having every, every thought scrutinized, and having everything I say scrutinized. And having people like form opinions of me. Without knowing me, and without me having any, any ability to manage the perception, I think. You know, manage perceptions of myself, um, and so it's, this, this, uh, council race is really. Uh, really forced me to lean into authenticity and to open myself up. And, and not, you know, put a lampshade on the light that I have in me. Um, so, yeah, I, I think as far as, you know, all the, the life lesson sort of things that. You know, things like this give us, I think it's been great. I could be first in this race, I could be last in this race right now, like, none of us know. I, I look at it as, you know, I come from a swimming background, just gotta get on the podium, I'll take a bronze, I'll take a silver, I love the gold. I'd love to be the top vote getter. But at this point, you know, I, I just wanna serve my city.
So, is this like a, a five-hundred-meter, uh, race, it's not, it's not really a sprint.
It's, you hit the nail on the head, actually, I, I would say a five-hundred free. Short course or like a two-hundred free long course, like, neither of those is fun, but like. In the, in, in the two-hundred long course in particular, it's like you. Every, every swimmer kind of has a different way of looking at those four-fifties, and so like. If we compare that to this race, like, I think in the beginning, I. I think I, I leverage sort of digital and like the things that I do well, and I think that like. You know, so I kind of go out fast and then, you know, hold on to the end, whereas I think like someone like Brett. You know, he's really, I think, shined in this last month, this last quarter of the race, because he's amazing at canvassing.
Oh, yeah, 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 he's got that AFL.
So, like, he, he's, he's legitimately good at it, and so it's. It's really been interesting to kind of see everybody's strategies.
Have you been doing the door-to-door stuff much, or?
I have, actually, I've, I've done it with Brett, um, I'll be honest with you, Trent, like. It's, it's sometimes like, I get really nervous, like, just in one-on-one kind of social. Um. Interactions and like, I don't wanna like just go randomly knocking on people's doors, um. And so, I will say that it's, it's helped me to really develop that muscle and start to like. Get over that fear, um.
Tell me what you're afraid of.
I'm just, I'm like, I'm afraid of being perceived as a threat by somebody.
I, I, I mean, I couldn't help but think, but you're a large.
I don't wanna walk up on the wrong house and think like, you know, so it, it's, I've, I've tried to, I didn't, I like, I haven't. I haven't leaned into that, I haven't looked at that and been like, oh, I'm at a disadvantage, or no, like, it's just like. You know what, I, I'll just say this. At the end of the day. Whether I win or whether I lose, there are gonna be people who feel like it was because I was black. And that's just the name, like, I'm the first to ever do it, I'm the first person to look like me to run for city council in this city, and like, so this is new. This is, this is a huge sort of transformative moment for Celine, like, so. For me, like, I, I try not to even think about those things, like, that doesn't matter, and that's why I haven't really leaned into the whole, like. I'm the first black guy, like, that certain thing, because I want. People to know me beyond just that, like, clearly you can see I'm black, like, I don't need to point that out to anybody, um, but. The real sort of trepidation for me, um, with knocking on doors is really like, there's been two or three, Sandra. No, there was a case, the woman just got charged where, you know, she shot through the door at her neighbor, like, there are people who, who have been like doing these things. So, don't think that that would happen in Celine. But you just never know, and, and for me, I just decided to.
Do you feel like you, you, like, just by knocking on the door and talking about city issues, as a black man? Maybe people have never talked to somebody like that before at the door like that, do you think that you, that's a form of? Uh, uh, that's an important interaction for the city?
And, and that is honestly like, a lot of people don't realize just how diverse this city is, I think. Anywhere from about ten to twelve percent of the citizens of the city. Consider themselves one or more race or non-white, so it's like. It is, you know, becoming more and more diverse, and, um. One of the things that I've actually, to your point, have heard is, you know. It, it's, it's really cool what I'm doing, that it, you know, Celine is ready for it, there have been people who. Um, I remember Brett telling me, like, other people who've said, like, they aren't sure if I could win as a black man in Celine, and like. I just kind of say to that, we'll see.
Well, I remember, uh, in the school board race, we had Aramadee Botshwan, uh, who ran, I have to help her pronounce the name right. But, uh, and that was, that was at an important time, and, and she won in a big race against a well-known candidate, who's a good guy, by the way. And, 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 uh, she did a good job before she, she moved away. And, and I thought that was important for the city, symbolic in some way, I, it's hard to know exactly how, but it's. I don't know.
I think, I think for me, um, for a city that, you know. Has had our issues with racism, um. For, uh, like. I, I believe fully in people's ability to judge every candidate by our platforms. To judge every candidate by how we show up in the spaces we show up in, um. And so, I, like, I'm not, you know, I'm not gonna sit here and act like. I'm, you know, terrified of, oh, no, I don't wanna walk, like, knock on white people's doors. Um, it's really just, I, I, a lot of people don't know me, right, a lot of people don't know me. Um, I am a, a, I'm not a small guy, um, and it's just being cognizant, like, maybe, you know, if I win and. Or if I lose and I run again, like, now that more people know my face and see my face, like, I. I think I will have more of that comfort level to like knock on doors and.
And you're gonna have the public profile to get.
You know, what is the quote, Oscar, I think it was Oscar Wilde.
We haven't talked anything about.
Right, I, I appreciate you allowing me to like clear that up, because I don't like this narrative.
Of, uh, I mean, learning, I think, as I said to somebody else at the day, you learn a lot just by listening to people. Learn a lot about the way they think, and that's more informative than what you think of the rec center or what you think of.
All those things.
And, you know, you know, and those things are important.
They are important.
But when you learn about how people think, you know.
In the core of who they are as a person, and that's all I want people to see is like my heart, like.
So, let's talk about some of these, uh, Celine City Council issues, what, what, what issues matter to you? Uh, I mean, there's a whole bunch of little things going, big things, little things going on, but.
Um, obviously, the rec center, um, I was on the task force, like, the rec center and.
Were you in that presentation?
I did not make the presentation, um. I, that was actually when we buried my cousin, like, and we were dealing with the, the passing of my cousin. Uh, I did like go and kind of help with like the final presentation and kind of when it was presented before that. And I actually had planned on like speaking at that working meeting, but it ended up just being a really heavy day. Um, but the rec center is obviously something that I care about, I think the second. Sort of the, in no particular order, um, I think. Reimagining our downtown and revitalizing, uh, what our downtown is and what it looks like. Is, is a huge thing, um, I think I've met so many small business owners, so many entrepreneurs, so many makers, like. People who are just, you know, doing really cool things, making really cool things, um, right here in the city. And it's like. You know, I wanna see that be something that's celebrated, and so I, I've, actually I've talked to Mary about it, on Main Street, like. Of, of a Made in Celine campaign, like, we have so many cool things that are made here, we have so many. Artists who are, you know, living right here in Celine, like. Let's celebrate that, let's, let's create programs to provide funding, let's connect. Our local entrepreneurs and our local makers, let's print, connect them with Ann Arbor Spark. And the small business, you know, the, the Entrepreneur Resource Center at WCC, like, when people can, like. Complain or only think about where our tax dollars going, it's going to programs like that to encourage entrepreneurship. In our communities, um.
It, it's starting to feel like more and more people have to find their own way to do things, because. A lot of these corporate jobs, I wonder how long they're gonna be.
Are drying, drying up, like, my husband is a recruiter, like, he's a tech recruiter, so if you talk about like. An industry where. There are a lot of jobs drying up, like, he, I see it and I hear it every day, it's not easy out here for people. Um, to, you know, go get another corporate job. And there are people with amazing ideas in this city, there are people who, like I said, are doing really cool things. Like making music, creating content, and it's like, as a city. I'm all for us luring in like more businesses, but the way that I look at it is. If we are seen as a city that celebrates and promotes and, and helps. The businesses born right here scale, that's only gonna attract like that outside investment, that's only gonna attract. Businesses that can look at Celine and say, wow, they really support their entrepreneurs, they really support their small businesses. Um, they have programs that highlight, they provide access to services, like. You know, I, I've mentioned the creation of a circular economy in, in the city of Celine amongst our businesses. Like, I think we need an innovation district within our city, um, so, yeah, like downtown and, and reimagining. What doing business in the city looks like is something that's incredibly important to me, uh, and then the final issue is. It kind of touches a number of issues, it touches on the dam, it touches on Curtis Mansion, um, but the way in which. The citizens of this city, um, weigh in on how we spend money. You know, I, I don't think it's, it's fair. For our council to be spending millions of dollars. And those things not come to a public vote or some kind of referendum. I've said that since the beginning of the race. Uh, when I think about the dam, you know, I. I think it's it's I've listened to both sides and I've I've. Really appreciated getting to know and hear both sides of that, but the thing that really stood out to me and sort of what. Changed my position and where I landed on with the dam um. Is the fact that like there was like a ten something year period where we weren't doing the inspections.
Oh, no dude, the jobs at that meeting.
Looked around because like let's be real. There's no job that I've ever worked where if I didn't do what I was supposed to do for ten years, that I'd still have it. And like, the fact that it was perpetuated over that that amount of time is insane to me. So for me, when I think about the dam, when I think about. Where like the dam needs rehabilitation. I think that before we do anything, I don't care if we choose to take it out, keep it in, whatever. We need to get it up to safety standards. Public safety is paramount and. I believe in the work that, you know, our engineer Tasha is doing. Uh, Director Hoplow, I've been very impressed every time, you know, he's presenting at council um. And so for me, I think like we went ten years. Without realizing that this damn. Wasn't getting what it needed. And in that interim, we're spending money and like. You know, you get a check, you get a check, you get a study, you get a study, you get a, you get a assessment, you get like. And citizens like have had no say in like where that money gets spent, so I honestly would advocate like some I. My, the number for me was was half a million dollars. If the city is planning on spending. More than half a million dollars, like that's something that needs to. Go to the public. It needs to go to the public. Someone said a quarter of a million. I think that might be, cause I think about, I know we just spent money on like snow trucks. That we need, you know, and that that's a it it an expenditure, so like. For non-essential purchases of, you know, a quarter of a million or more. Like, I think that those things should go to a pub.
What did you end up thinking about the uh, about the dam? Should they remove the dam? Should they?
I think again, I was I was probably one of the first candidates to say it. It's gonna cost us a lot of money to keep it. Or to get rid of it and. Seven people sitting at that at that day is like they shouldn't get to decide that by themselves, so I think that the the dam. I don't, I'm not concerned with whether we keep it or not. That's not what I'm concerned about. What I'm concerned about with the dam is that is it safe right now? Is it in regulation right now and it's not?
From what I understand, it's not, I it's not. It's not terrible. It's not, it's not ideal.
But it's not compliant.
Oh, it's okay, it's, but from what I understand, the safety. This like nobody's gonna drown or cars are gonna float away and all that stuff, but it would create an awful mess that would be super expensive to clean up.
It's a liability. You know, if if one of DPW goes out there and gets hurt because of this thing like.
But at the end of the day, I just, if I'm sitting up at the city council. That's a, it's a hard call, it's it's a hard call to say. We're gonna remove that dam and take away Mel Pond when 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 all these people bought these houses that overlook a pond. Then maybe they bought that house to watch the geese. I I don't know. On the other hand. I, you know, I s- I hear people talk about the recreation, they can canoe on the dan- on the pond and all that kinda stuff. I don't see that very often.
Yeah, I don't see that.
And to be honest, the pond is pretty disgusting. If you've ever tried to put your foot, foot in the. It just goes right into the slime. So I can, I can. Unless they can find a way to create electricity out of it that somehow benefits the city, I don't really see that much upside to it except for. It looks really nice when you drive by and and that's, that's to me, one of still one of the things that I love about that pond is you drive by. Just a beautiful thing to look at and and I don't know how much that's worth, you know, I like, I like seeing that house, the. The Davenport House, the Curtis Mansion, whatever. I love seeing the house, but how much is it really worth to keep it?
And I think again, that's why I think that those two issues like tied together like. At the end of the day, we need to decide those things together. So the only thing worse than being talked about is to not be. So obviously in the past three, four days, Brett and I have become enough of a threat to somebody to where they feel like. We are, we are the boogers they wanna pick um. And one, like I'm, I'm, I'm definitely not one to be picked on, picked with, picked at. Um, and two, like, don't hide behind the keyboard. Don't hide behind the keyboard, like this whole race and and don't hide behind a keyboard. And tell us that we're not adults and in the same breath. Call for healing that needs to take place in this city, like how can you call for healing but then choose violence? And I'm not a they go low, we go high Democrat, like I wish Michelle would have never said that. If you go low, there's a chance you might get kicked in the face. I believe in being as big a person as you require me to be.
Yeah, you know, I try to be, I don't really care about go low, go high, but I try to be, avoid that stuff. But sometimes you get in a mood where you get attacked and you're just like.
No, and no, and like that was one of those moments where it's just like, I have been very quiet. I have not. I've not been negative and then for you to say that like, oh, I'm this this far left like. Whatever, which like that's not even, that doesn't even bother me. What bothers me is the fact that like. You A literally have not been listening to really anything that I've said over this campaign trail. B, you can go across my personal Facebook, you can go across. My candidate Facebook and I have the only national politic, national political issue that I've said a word about. Is the Epstein files. That is the only thing and I I thought that was. You know, like that's the only national thing, like I'm a survivor. I was groomed and I was violated. By an actual predator, so the Epstein files aren't a game for me. Like. That, those are the only things that I've said nationally and so what's crazy is that you have this person who's trying to like spin this narrative. Of who I am when you don't know me and then I keep asking like, let's have a conversation and you you won't respond, so it's like.
I don't, I don't wanna talk about too much about like. But what drives me crazy is when people tell you what you think or or people act, they attack you for thinking something that you don't even think. And it's laughable, but they, but if enough people start saying it, it it's what, it's what. And and at some point, I think everybody, anybody in politics, like I feel. I mean, I've criticized members of city council for things. And mo- it's mostly just for decisions they make or activities that happen and and. You think they gotta have, you gotta have some thick skin though at some point and you gotta develop the ability to be to somehow rise above it. And I don't know, that's not easy to do.
Try and I will, I have risen above a lot. Over the course of this election from other candidates, like I've not called out things on other candidates that I could have called out. I've not called out a lot of of things, but what you're not gonna do and what you will never. Ever do to me is you're not gonna mischaracterize who I am as a person. You are not gonna impugn my character. I am not racist, which clearly you don't understand how racism works if you think that me holding a Black Voters Matter sign is racist. But I treat everybody the way that I wanna be treated and I don't. I don't falter in that because of who a person voted for, who they love, how much money they have, what they look like. I try every day to get up and love my neighbors as myself and so. At the end of the day, like I do rise above a lot, but.
Oh, I'm not suggesting you.
Right, right, no, no, but but what's crazy, what's so funny about this current situation is like I responded to you and I I didn't even. Go as hard as I I I I put on like the training wheels because I know. And it's funny that this ended up happening, um, I defended myself, person came back who runs the page. I defended myself again and pointed out like just. The buffoonery that was occurring and then you know what they said? You sound like a hothead.
Well, the pick at you.
Poke at the bear and then I believe like if you poke at a bear, you don't get to decide how it mauls you.
I could be a hothead.
It's so funny how that goalpost moves like a football because. At first it was I'm a far right, I'm a leftist, then I was a racist and then I asked for these special carve-outs and then it was, and then it finally settled on. You sound aggressive, like and those people, you know, I still will serve you. I I still wanna see you thrive. I still wanna see you win. I still wanna be a servant to you as well, so.
I I I follow that page too and there are times when I, when I shake, shake, shook my head at the page. There are times when I agree with some of the things they've said because they're they're challenging something, you know, but I mean.
And I will fight for your rights to challenge. I will fight. I love when people. Critical thinking, like I I think that we should make critical thinking great again, like. So I'm never gonna be somebody who is is is, oh, only one opinion matters or, oh, I only. I I go out of my way to get out of the echo chamber. Like, because at the end of the day, like I believe. That Jesus died on the same cross for liberals, conservatives, Republicans, Democrats. And I believe that at the end of the day, none of us are gonna make this, make it out of this alive. So I want to learn as much as I can from the people around me and I wanna like make sure that I leave it. Better than than I got it and I'm really learning like this page and like.
But that's the most well known.
But you know, it's it's just an example of like I have to. This is what I ask for. This is what I pray for. This is what I said that I was gonna do this year and so I have to to lean into it, take the good and the bad. I'm always gonna protect myself like and people can, you know, you can yap 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 as much as you want to um.
You know, one of the, one of the people, and I'll be honest, when I saw you standing next to Susan Eaststep in the picture, I was like, oh, I don't know if I can uh. If I can get with that because I've not had the greatest relationship with Susan, but like, let me tell you something about Susan Eaststep. She dominated that school board. I mean, and she should be proud. Cause she believes in in everything she says and uh. I don't believe in all that stuff, in all of it, it but she believes it and she managed to. Completely change uh, trans policy in this district uh, and and do. And it's still in. She's not on the council anymore or on the board anymore, but those policies still are, you know, and. I think she should be proud of what she did, cause I know she believes in what she says and 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 she made things happen.
And I respect anyone who does that, like I've said those same words about like the Trump administration and the Republican Party. Like say what you want about him, like they stood on their principles, they got out and voted and like. You know, I might not agree, but like this is. It's not like we as Democrats, we we didn't have the, we had the playbook. We knew what we were getting into, so like, we got beat. And I'm, I I just have to, you know, put my head down. And and get through these four years. I've, you've never seen me publicly disparage our president. You've never seen me.
I have.
I, you've never, I'm just not that type of person. One of my ancestors, my sixth great grandfather signed the constitution. Like, so when I think about American like. Hello, it's it it just, it for me, this whole race. The reason why I'm I'm in this race, the reason why, you know, I do wanna to move into like. A public office and like public facing is because. When I look out into the world, I see things that are missing. I think there's empathy missing. I think there's love missing. I think there is. Collaboration missing. I think that there is critical thinking missing, like I think there's a lot of things missing and I was always raised, you can either. Shut up or you can do something about it and so I am choosing to do something about it and I hope that regardless of. Who you voted for, regardless of of any of that mess. Dealing with like what's going on in DC um. I just hope that like you will give me a chance and at least like. Meet me halfway and trying to figure out solutions together as a city.
Let's talk about a couple cities, maybe we're just gonna close this rec center down and build a nicer rec rec center that's modern. Meets modern needs. Maybe we're also gonna do more to help each other, help build like little parks or improve parks, you know. Maybe, I don't know, but some sort sort of idea that gets them involved rather than just takes their money. Because to take their money for nine percent of the low, you know, people or from low tide township or whatever. I don't know, I don't know if that's gonna, like you said.
It's, it's, I I did, so one of the slides that really stuck out to me like in the presentation. Uh, there were two slides that really stuck out and the first one was was looking at how the percentage of our total tax revenue. The rec center constituted per year um. And and I think at its highest, it was about six percent um. And so when I looked at that number and then in the slide that was that was kind of comparing like. What does, what do other municipalities that have pools look like their funding? My perception was that we actually are doing a lot with a lot less that that other municipalities are having. And you know, I think fi- I look at five percent and and I say like, I could live with that. There are some people who look at that and be like, wait, that's way too much to be spending on a rec center. Um, but I think for me, it it really contextualized a few things that one. Like I said, we we are doing a whole lot with less and two, that it's really a community center. I think we've already moved past. A rec center and so how do we? Excuse me, how do we continue to lean into that community and wellness aspect? And I think that if we're gonna still continue to try to 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 offer. What other other entities in the city are doing better, we're we're fighting a losing battle.
I'd say like the Livonia Rec Center is one of the rec centers on that, on that list. And uh, uh, they have a millage in Livonia. That helps fund that and great funds most of it. I don't think they use a lot of general fund on that, however. They got a hundred thousand people in Livonia and and we've got nine and. And uh, they have a greater tax base, commercial, industrial tax base and all that kinda stuff too, so it's, that's a. That's, that's gonna be a challenge for for the city.
To sell that, absolutely, but I but I think that if we if we start implementing. Some of the things that I outlined in Rec Next, it's gonna make the rec center a far more attractive investment for people.
You think it needs, you think it's gotta stay in the rec center that where where it is right now, I mean.
I I I don't think it necessarily needs to move. I think that that space, that there's plenty of space still to do some expansion. I think that it's in a great spot. I think that there are some things that we can do. Uh, to kind of visually make it more appealing, appealing, like I would love to see like a new facade on the building. But I think that, I think that there is, there are some investments that we could make now that would allow us to really. You know, like I said, continue to to grow into that community wellness space.
Let me ask you a couple questions here. Some people uh, had emailed questions earlier. Uh, Celine River Dam, we talked about that. Does downtown have enough parking? If not, uh, should we buy some more room for parking? Should we have paid parking?
So, I, I have the luxury of living within walking distance to downtown. So like I will be honest, I don't often think about the parking. I, I I might get absolutely crucified for this, but if. If it was, if we did end up purchasing the Curtis Mansion and we split it into part like parcels, maybe one of them like we. We create a parking structure and and that does have paid parking. I think before. Like we're worried about parking when I don't feel like there's enough. Like, we're worried about parking when I don't feel like there's enough to really bring people downtown. When we, when we have, I was just about to say, when we have events and like, things are going on. It's a good problem to have. And so for me, it's like, okay, how can we, how can we carry that momentum? You know, in the weeks after an event, like, how many people, like, when we have these events in Celine, right? Like, how many people wanna come back to Celine outside of the event? You know, I feel like that, like, a lot of the surrounding areas' relationship with the city of Celine is very transactional.
Yeah.
Um, there's a lot of resources that flow out of Celine, but there's not that same sort of equitable inflow. Of resources.
So like Wally, a lot of Ann Arbor customers. I think Salt has quite a bit of, uh, uh, Ann Arbor customers too. Brecken and Dan feel a little bit more like towny places. And, uh, Drop Top, I'm not sure what their, I've only ta- had Takeout, really haven't.
I, I'm not gonna lie, like, I've, I've eaten at all those spots downtown and like. The one I go to, the probably the most consistently is Drop Top.
Drop Top?
Yeah.
It's a great addition and I think all, all five of those places are great for Celine. I would like to see seven or eight.
We need, I've heard this from a number of people and I wholeheartedly agree, a Thai restaurant.
Oh, I love that. Old Saigon restaurant, I would love to see them come here.
And, uh, an Italian spot, like, we need an Italian place back, so.
Yeah, I agree.
I, I say parking, cool, like, let's get people down here, like, to where parking really is an issue outside of our events.
Um, when, when you take a look at, well, you've already talked about this, what do you really think downtown needs? Like, when you talked about the Thai restaurant, talked about, but what is it, like, you take a look at the way Dexter, Dexter seems to have really. Transformed in the last ten years. Chelsea has been on more of a steady trajectory, trajectory. Now they got the Purple Rose Theater and all that kinda stuff, which makes, it's hard to compete with. What does Celine need to? Sort of take that next step. You've talked about it.
I think Celine needs to start investing in what's here. I think that one, one of the things that. I, I point to Mylan particularly, cause I feel like they're the, probably the closest comparison. Like, their, their rental rates in their downtown spaces were a lot cheaper, so it was easier. It, it was a lot. You know, businesses were incentivized to, to get in there. So I think we need to think about, are there programs? Um, that could be funded through the SBA, that could be funded through Ann Arbor Spark. Uh, that can be funded through the Michigan Innovation Fund, like. I actually, one of the plans that I'm laying out and I thought about is a Celine Innovation Fund, like a Citizens Innovation Fund and like what that would look like. Um, but I think we need to, I'm a big believer in promoting from within. Um, I think that if we have sound investment in, in. The business owners that are here, and then we also create an environment that allows them to thrive, so. Are we making it easy to access funding for entrepreneurs and, um.
I think Main Street does that.
Main Street, and it's interesting because Joe, my husband, like, he, he's on the Main Street Board now and his. He, you know, is kind of leading up economic vitality. So we have these conversations with one another, like, all the time of just like, what? What does economic vitality look like for this city? Uh, and, and like I said, the thing we, we come back to both is we, we start investing. In what's here.
I mean, the place where we are right now, a lot of people don't know it exists, but a lot of people who don't have a ton of money for rent and all these things.
A virtual, like, I'm, I'm interested, like, for my consultancy and figuring out what like rates and stuff are here. Because it's, like, these are spaces that I think could be absolutely repurposed and, um.
If you don't know, we're in the Ann Arbor Music Center.
I've seen it drive by, I've, the art is really, really cool. And I'm a huge music fan. I think that's one cool thing about a number of the candidates in this race is.
Oh, yeah.
The love of music amongst the candidates. But no, I think that, like, this is something that should be advertised to more people, more business owners. More, more, more small time entrepreneurs who, who might need an office or who might wanna expand. I think, like I said, for me, it all goes back to like, invest in what's here, like. The grass that you water is the grass that's gonna be greener.
Yeah.
And, and, you know, again, I'm all for bringing businesses in, like, I think about Clan Code, I think about. We've, the, so far, the Chamber of Commerce has done. At least ten, eleven, if not more ribbon cuttings, you know?
Yeah, this is doing a good job at the chamber.
Let's, let's continue to, to, to invest in those things.
We, uh, let me ask you about this council race.
Yes.
Who are, who are getting your votes besides yourself? Or are you gonna just block everybody else and say, I'm only gonna vote for myself to give myself the better chance?
Uh, you know, I, for me, it's not even like that's, I heard that and it was kind of a moment where everyone was like. I, you know, I, I said I was gonna vote for like, this is very early in the race, but I was gonna vote for X, Y, Z. And they were like, no, you're not. You're only gonna vote for yourself. And I'm like, that doesn't make sense.
Really? Somebody said that?
Yes, and I'm like, so I, and I'm like, that's not democracy, that's not, like, I don't want to, to win because of math. I wanna win.
Well, I know you've been doing these events with Brett. Are you guys?
Are we a slate? He's, he's so coy. Um, I, like, at, well, you know what? At this point, now that we're both being attacked together, like, I feel like we are a slate. I feel like, you know, like, people. Are coming for us.
We're both under attack, all of a sudden you're allies.
All of a sudden, and it's just like, listen, I'm not one that you wanna put my back against the wall and Brett isn't either. So even before all of this happened, like, the, the person, so I will say this, I'm definitely voting for Brett. The third person, like, honestly. Might be a game time decision. I don't even know, because.
Yeah, it's, it's kinda stressful when you get in there and you're not sure about something.
But I'm, like, so here's, here's why I say that. I've been in spaces both within this campaign. And outside of this campaign, um, where I've gotten to see the candidates. And like, interact and kind of hear. And I'm a very trust but verify, like, I observe everything. And the one thing that I looked for when I'm thinking about who do I vote for outside of myself is like. Is this person the same in every room that they're in? Like, are they authentic? Are they, are they consistent? Um, regard, I don't, I don't, like, the platform, I think for the most part, all the issues, like, we, we agree. So when I think about who I, who do I have respect for? Who do I respect? Like, who do I feel like is authentic? I'm, I'm, I'm struggling to, to think about that third person, cause I can point to some examples for like each candidate. Where for me, I feel like.
Yeah.
You know, I, I watch, I, I, that's one thing that if people really knew me. And like I said, it goes back to how my mom raised me, like, I'm always processing. Like, most of it is data points, like, I'm always processing, I'm always watching, because. I, I have to, it, it's my superpower because I have to know who's gonna hurt me or who, like, am I safe, like, protecting myself? So like.
To a certain extent, I just assume everybody's a threat.
I used to think that way, Trent, and I used to like really like, but it, just like the, your central nervous system just gets so fried and like. In a way, like, my central nervous system is starting to finally come out of like that fight or flight.
Yeah.
Um, and so my third person really is like, I don't know if there is a third person for me. Because that, that piece of authenticity is like very, very important to me. If I had to, to. I know, I'm not even gonna go down that road. I'm just gonna say. That the third, the third vote, if there is a third vote for me, is gonna happen.
Yeah, it's not decided yet.
And I'm also, and I'll tell you, like, on, on the, uh, CTE Village, like, I have still like. Been asking questions. I had a com- I had an opportunity to talk to a couple of parents whose children are like in some of those programs.
Oh, they definitely benefit.
And, yeah, so I'm still kind, cause on, like, I'm, I'm spend all the money for the kids, like.
We already, we already fund these programs, right?
So the reason why they want to, like, that at least that I've heard and like, don't crucify me. Is that a lot of them have huge waiting lists.
Right.
That a lot of them have waiting lists and they wanna be able to expand the program. And what I say to that is like. Eh, like, K through five. In ten years, when this village is like ultimately done or for renewal, like, kindergartners are only gonna be, or increase, yeah, right, right? Um, kindergartners, they're only gonna be fifteen, sixteen years old. So like, they, they, they probably will only be just like really thinking about. And, and the workforce will be completely transformed by the time that they get to that point. Like, the workforce is gonna be transformed within the next five to ten years.
Right.
And so my thinking is kind of like. Are the programs targeted enough and like, how are we gonna allocate this money to do two things, three things? Number one, how are we gonna allocate this money to make sure that the students, especially our, our juniors and seniors in high school? Um, that they come out ready to not only, um. Dominate, you know, in their post-secondary education, but also they come out ready to dominate as entrepreneurs. They're ready to dominate in a workforce that is continuing to change. So are these programs doing that? Number two, are these programs providing pathways for upward socioeconomic mobility? You know, are we, are, are, i- is a kid who does the plumbing? Or they, they do HVAC or they do auto repair, like. Are we gonna provide through these programs a pathway for them to make a, um, make a living, a decent living? And not have to go to college, cause college and university isn't for everybody.
Right.
Um, and then the third thing is like, are we using these funds to? Um, to like combat disparities? Like, are we, are we using these funds to, um. Advocate for, for more women in, in male-dominated fields? Are we, are we pushing? Are we, are we advocating for there to be more male nurses? Are we advocating for, for everyone? To have access to these programs, but also for everyone to have a pathway to a decent living and a decent life? Cause at the end of the day, I remember growing up, like, that's all I really wanted. I wanted to be able to afford to have, you know. A decent life and just leave me alone.
I, when I was a kid, my friends, a lot of, me and my friends in my neighborhood, we didn't have any idea. Some of us were, knew we wanted to go to college, we weren't even sure why. But I, I had some friends who had no desire to go to college whatsoever. And in their senior year, they, they got a co-op and they would go get, uh, bussed out to some. Tool and die place in the county somewhere. And they would work there all morning, uh, for, and, uh, then they do school in the afternoon. And, and then, uh, their first year of, instead of college, they, well, they went to St. Clair College to, to learn the trade. Uh, tool and die trade, but then they had to work for free, you know, for a year.
Right.
And then the next year, they ma- started making a little bit of money, but they got their college paid for too at the same time.
Exactly.
So, I mean, and now these guys who didn't know what they wanted to do whatsoever. And now these guys live in beautiful houses.
And they own their, their, their small business owners and they probably employ other people, like.
Well, even, they don't, they're not bosses, but they just made a hundred and twenty grand a year in tool and die. And they, they did really well for themselves, raised families, live in a nice lake community and all that kinda stuff. So. You know, there, there's an example of how government can, and schools and everything can work together to improve people's lives.
All I want, that's literally, but I, I believe this and I've said it many times on this show. I think the role of government is to do the most good for the most people with the least harm. And I, when I think about like the CTE Village, like, I kinda am balancing two things. It's, it's, I'm looking at the future workforce versus current affordability. Cause there are people where that tax over ten years could absolutely price them out of, of being in here in Celine. And so I think I would be open to a discount. Of, of, or an exemption of those taxes for our retirees and our seniors.
Yeah.
You know, if you don't, if you don't have a kid in, in the school district or you're not, you've been, you've lived here in Celine for twenty, thirty years. Your grandkids have graduated, like, you have no, you know, you kind of.